Good afternoon and welcome to the eighteenth meeting of the Honolulu Liquor Commission. Please silence all of your electronic devices. If you're appearing today, please introduce yourself and your client. Spell your name for the commission reporter. And if you're here to testify, please come forward, introduce yourself, fill your name, and be sworn in by Ms. Orai. While moving into the public hearing, agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one three eight seven one from seven eleven Hawaii.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, commission members. Kenneth who are appearing for the applicant. To my right is Blake Yokotake. Y O K O T A K E. Director of Human Resources and authorized to represent D B A.
Thank you, Ms. Orai.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. This application has received one written protest, zero letters in support. App can I submit statutory requirements for the submission of this application? And for the record, a summary of the September twentieth preliminary hearing testimony was provided to Commissioner Ghanaban prior to the public hearing.
Thank you, is there anyone in the audience that would like to testify for or against this application? Seeing none, commissioners?
Okay, motion approved.
Commissioner uh.
Mister who um. Since the preliminary hearing, a letter protest came in, I I trust you saw that. Did you make any effort to try to reach out to this person and find out what his or her concerns were?
Well, we already received a letter this past Tuesday.
Okay.
It was not time to.
Okay, and the letter doesn't state any specific reason.
Doesn't state any reason why.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, uh motion to approve, application number one eight dash one three eight seven one.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Public hearing, agenda item number one, application number one eight dash one three eight seven one is approved. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number two. Application number one nine dash one five four two one from Free Spirits LLC. Mr. Joy, Mr..
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Okota appearing on behalf of Free Spirit LLC. To my right is Matthew Troy, manager.
Thank you very much, commissioners.
Okay, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five four two one.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number two, application number one nine dash one five four two one is approved.
Thank you.
Calling agenda item number three.
Uh Chair, if it's the commission would allow, could we also take number seven at this time?
Uh we could. Commissioners, do you have any objections? Uh calling agenda item number seven, application number, did you say seven?
Seven, yes, under F S M B.
Okay, application number one nine dash one five five one nine from S F S M B LLC, D B A Pitts Sports Bar.
Good afternoon, members of the commission, Neil Okota appearing on behalf of F S M B LLC, D B A Pitts Sports Bar. To my right is Matthew Troy, manager.
Thank you, commissioner.
Mr. Okota.
Yes.
The licensed area is only a beer garden only.
Only a beer garden.
However, you will have guests under the age of twenty one who are attending the event overall.
Correct, but not in the beer garden.
Okay, very good. Okay, uh motion to approve, uh application number one nine dash one five five one nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, application number one nine dash one five five one nine is approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, let's go back to agenda item number three, is that correct?
Yeah.
This is um. Application number one nine dash one five five two seven dash one. Dash two, dash three, dash four, dash five, and one nine dash one five five two seven dash six from Watavi Wadi.
Good afternoon, Chair, vice chair, commission members. My name is Kiko Bukowski on behalf of the applicant. To my right is Mr. Tacchida, T A C H I D A.
Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five five two seven dash one. Two, one nine, one five five two seven dash six.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number three, application number one nine dash one five five two seven dash one. Through one five five two seven dash six inclusive is approved. Thank you. Thank you. Good luck, Mr. Bukowski, it's given to be a while. Enjoy the pain in the therapy room. Calling, calling agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four seven six two from Guaylo Tavern LLC.
Sorry, I forgot my clothes in my at home, I didn't have a chance to change my clothes.
You're you look great to us, you look good to us. Please introduce yourselves, sir.
Jason Paz, J A S O N, last name is P A Z.
Okay, commissioners?
Mr. Paz. Looking at the investigative report, there seems to be an unlicensed outdoor deck, which is approximately six hundred square feet. Um what is that unlicensed, I mean what is that deck gonna be used for, is it gonna be used for anything?
Uh for outside dining, uh we did submit the uh updated plans with uh updated blueprints to get that space licensed. Uh but it won't be actually, I guess submitted until after the um the the public hearing.
Okay.
So currently it's just used for outside dining, uh we do have a policy of no alcohol on the deck.
Okay.
Other staff forces.
Okay, but eventually you're gonna get it licensed.
Right, just to, yeah, exactly.
Okay. Uh motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four seven six two.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number four, application number one nine dash one four seven six two is approved. Calling agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one four nine eight zero.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the commission, Mia Ofsiyana on behalf of the licensed C and Keith Kiuchi. Seated to my right is Rod Tengon, authorized agent.
Chair, due to a conflict of interest, I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Chair, we have no uh changes.
Can we hold on a minute?
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, commissioners?
Alrighty, so this is in my area where I live. Um I haven't seen this part yet, but I'm a little, um I haven't seen this in the theaters yet, which is um the six of the fourteen theaters will have a second floor. So that's new, I haven't heard of a second floor, so um. What, what, are you guys done already renovating it?
Not yet, no.
Not, so the second floor is on which side, on the left or the right?
Well, um we have two auditoriums that have um access from the mezzanine.
Okay.
And um. Yeah, it's just those two auditoriums, number three and number six.
Okay. So you, your intention is you have six, six with two floors, right, on it?
No, I I I think with the um, I think with the with the drawings that you you might have. Uh because it goes beyond a certain level in terms of the the height of the. I guess the second level of the theater, um.
Is that what it is, we're not talking like an entire floor of work?
Yeah. We're not talking about that.
Cause I was thinking that, I didn't think you had the room to do it.
No, there is.
But if we're talking just a step up and going to another, um just another part of the um theater, then that makes sense.
Well, there is access from the mezzanine level, which is where our um some of our offices are. And also the projection room and um there's a, there's a multipurpose room up there as well. But uh at the time, we were required because of the capacity of those auditoriums to have that access. Uh the capacities have changed with our renovation. So um but but that but that access space is still available.
Okay, so um. Mililani is a different community and very vocal, um very different community from the other ones that you guys launched in. It's a very um. There's a huge high school demographic that is there on those malls. But we have quite a bit of licensees within that mall as well. But it's a very family environment as well too. So just um be aware, Mililani um Mililani Theaters is gonna be a different challenge from Ward or anything else that you guys have had. And you guys also do a church service there on a Sunday as well, right?
We do, yes.
And you guys have like a maternity Monday or something where expected mothers go to the movies as well, right?
Yeah, we have a crybaby in that name.
They do, they do.
So we 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 are, yeah.
Thank you.
Commissioner, we we're definitely aware of uh.
Only cry, crybaby, crybaby Mondays, so yeah, to the expected mothers since the woman there.
Right.
Okay.
So I have one one question. So please tell us your intention for applying for this category of license in that specific area.
Right, we um, Mr. Chair, we are looking to implement the a similar um type of program that we have at uh we have done at Ward and at Olino. And we are looking to implement the same security plan that we have at Ward and Olino. Where we'll have um. You know, our our hope is again, if if we're granted the license to uh have a two-drink maximum. We also will have wristbands for those that are purchasing alcohol. Uh we will have our auditorium monitoring, um both with uh our security cameras as well as our personnel going into the auditoriums every thirty minutes.
Okay, very good. For for the public hearing, could we see that document?
Yes.
Could you include that document, the security plan and everything like that?
Sure, sure. Right.
All protected here on the record, yep?
Yes.
We uh, Commissioner Banagang, we we uh we made a presentation to the neighborhood board. And I met with the uh the chair and um after the meeting, um both the chair and the vice chair expressed support for our plan. And they said that they would provide any any guidance, but I can understand that's necessary.
That helps, that helps, good outreach.
Yeah.
We we appreciate that, uh we just wanna make sure that we dot our i's and cross our t's.
We understand.
For the record, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. Vice Chair Ghanaban?
Alright, motion to approve, application number one nine dash one four nine eight seven.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number five, application number one nine dash one four nine eight zero is approved. Can we help uh?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Mayasho, back? Please? Calling agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one five zero nine six from E K C International Hawaii, Ms. Cole.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of E K C International. Present to my right is Officer Mamoru Takemori. Like to um apologize, Commissioner, for the way I'm dressed today, I had miscounted it, I thought this is for the following week. Uh we have no changes to the investigative report as well.
Okay, thank you very much. Please take that, commissioners.
Same, same comment as the previous applicant, Mr. Paz received, which is fine, that's fine.
This is only administrative uh volunteer commission, so I don't know if there's really a dress code to people appearing. I know attorneys usually do follow the standard rules. But uh thank you for those of you that just.
Okay, uh motion to approve, application number one nine dash one five zero nine six.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number six, application number one nine dash one five zero nine six is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you for your. Calling uh agenda item number eight. That's how's that it?
Oh, Ms. Cole again, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. At least I didn't call it agenda item number seven. I'm all marked up here.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole.
May I call, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Uh calling agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one five two zero zero from Chibo International Co.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Naomi Cole on behalf of the applicant. Present to my right is uh Mr. Akira Kashimura. We have no changes to the investigative report.
Thank you, commissioners?
Okay, motion to approve, um stock transfer application number one nine dash one five two zero zero.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eight, application number one nine dash one five two zero zero is approved.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
Thank you. Uh moving into agenda item number nine, uh request number one nine dash one five five seven two from Mr. Robert Uyoka.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Members of the commission, Ms. Orai, Robert Uyoka on behalf of Maple Bear Inc. and D B A Instacart. Uh this is a request for declaratory ruling to allow payment to a third-party delivery service, a flat fee or a percentage fee. Um Instacart is a nationwide delivery food service, um and we are fine if the commission is, commission issues or ruling on this matter, we do not require outright declaratory ruling.
Very good. Um, commissioners?
Mr. Uyoka, um, did you?
Commissioner, Commissioner.
Thank you. Do you have any understanding of um your client's experience in delivering alcoholic beverages in other jurisdictions?
Yes, I did actually ask that question, I think we're approved for a majority of states, at least fifteen states. Uh we are also, we're approved, and I checked in California, um so we are actively delivering in in many states.
I know that's probably a lot of volume of business, but do you have any indication from your client in terms of the success of the program, any glitches in the program, any ability to circumvent local regulations and rules?
I just know they're very cautious and careful, and that's why we're here today on declaratory ruling. Um Insta Instacart is very careful on getting approvals before operating, and that's why we are not currently delivering um to any hotels, which is the second declaratory ruling. And we just wanted to make sure we're doing everything above board with the delivery commission.
Thank you. Commissioners, any further questions?
One more question, Mr. Uyoka, um can you walk us through the the basis by which Instagram would receive compensation? I think it's an alternative, how does that work?
Uh Instacart is looking at two options, number one, just a flat fee. Um just based on like two dollars per delivery or four dollars per delivery. Or they're also considering a percentage of gross e gross sales arrangement whereby just the the larger items are, have a higher have a higher fee structure. So they just wanted the flexibility to get advanced permission to negotiate that fee structure, in either fee structures, it depends on what the retail licensee wants to do.
Okay, and I understand from your submission, and it was well-written in terms of the delivery person employed by Instagram would not.
Sorry.
Instacart.
I was gonna say, that's like, no.
Which I don't use very.
I don't know what that is either.
Yeah, I don't know what it is either, but um I understand that the delivery person has the discretion to do two things. Check identification, and if the person is not of age of minority of majority, they would deny the sale. Second, if there's intoxication or some apparent additional intoxication, the delivery person again would decline the 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 sale of the, or the delivery of the alcohol.
Absolutely.
So the question I have relative to the fee structures, what incentivizes the delivery person from upholding that in terms of making sure that this, the transaction does not occur under those circumstances?
If the sale goes through, basically nobody pays the fee, it gets paid back. So it's it's really, there's no incentive, I mean it's it's incentive, the only incentive for the delivery person is to be a responsible person and not to result in a violation, so they're in the best interest to prevent any violation. They also require if the person is, after a person presents ID and is twenty one or over, they do have to get a signature on the receipt. So there are insurances and protections to prevent the sale of minors.
And um do you have a position on whether Instacart would be subject to this commission's jurisdiction?
It's a great question, actually the um interest section two eighty one dash one defines a person or licensee as an agent. So presumably that would include Instacart as well.
Thank you. Any further questions?
Motion to convene into executive session.
Second.
Been moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye, we now need to make a decision. Okay, we uh, excuse me, back on the record, um Mr. Uyoka, there are a lot of unknowns for the commissioners. So with that being said, commissioners, could you um address your question, questions to Mr. Uyoka?
Okay, so, Mr. Uyoka.
Yes.
I'm gonna have two mindsets here, I'm gonna have the seventeen-year-old on one shoulder and I'm gonna have the adult on the other side, okay? So we're gonna walk through what we're doing here. Um just as any other concept that we've visited in this commission, which we we acknowledge with technology at different times and things are changing with the generation, there's new products and things that launch that we're unaware of and we don't have historical data or anything or anything to go based on. So. I'm gonna walk through this, um so I I I get on my computer and I'm ordering and I say I wanna order a bottle of wine, yeah, just say, right? Get on there, I put in the information, I set up an account and it's registered to Narsi Ghanaban. It walks me through it and allows me to check out, and it allows me to check out with specific retailers. So I'm thinking demographically, okay, they're saying, okay, I'm in Mililani, you're gonna say, oh, we have Safeway available Foodland, whatever maybe.
Costco, yes.
Okay, and just assuming, right, it's demographically, right? It selects a retailer based on what their selections are, and it finds out Costco has a blend that I like. So Costco is gonna be the retailer. So I check out and I say, okay. It checks out and it registers on the receipt and on the my credit card receipt at Costco. Not Instacart, but Costco is the retailer. The shopper, the Instacart shopper, so we have three players in this game, we have the shopper, we have the shopper is the deliver person, the seller and the retailer, right? So I order it, I didn't even know, I know, I I gotta go for the full details on it, so it, does it give me an ETA time and say a shopper will be to you, will be at you in two hours?
Yes, you can specify what time, we actually ordered water for my, just as a test for my law office and just, I just wanna see how it works. So I told us we did at nine o'clock, we had the delivery scheduled for one o'clock. So, like a.
Perfect, so you walked through it, okay, but this this helps me because you know me, I walk through things and I'm gonna actually buy something.
I did.
When they delivered it to you, you were the purchaser, so you went online to do it.
Yes.
When they showed up at your office, did you, you ordered it, the address where you ordered it from was the same address that you wanted it delivered?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Yeah.
Did it allow you to do a third-party delivery? Did it allow you to order and say, my credit card is listed here at this address? At my billing address is my office, however, I'd like to give a gift over to Mr. Hu at in Kahala.
It allowed you to specify the delivery, the delivery location.
It allows, so it does allow you to go to a third-party destination, right?
Yes, it does.
Does it require for me to be at the third-party destination?
If, yes, I mean you, it, we have to be, you have to be the one signing off for it, yes, the purchaser.
Okay. So we 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 go through this, it allows a third-party destination, it tells me what time it's gonna be there. I'm assuming the person that delivered to you. Was it an Uber type of situation?
He he was independent contractor with Instacart, and he gave me a Foodland receipt.
Okay, Foodland, cause you ordered it from Foodland, right?
Yeah. I ordered it from that.
So. I'm thinking that this is gonna go on a Uber line, which is, I thought of the, we're thinking of different ways, how does this work? It's like, okay, you got, you can order a meal from CP, um so um California Pizza Kitchen and say, hey, you know what, there's a good blend and let's pair it together and get it together and get it delivered, that's one scenario. Right?
But they don't allow delivery of liquor for a retail, for a restaurant, right?
Correct, but I'm gonna order from Safeway and I'm gonna get my food from C P K, right? So that that's one way, it could work, the second way is based on what you said and based on going to a third-party delivery. The seventeen-year-old, my kid, got the house party going, right? The licensee on the hook is gonna be Safeway or Costco that I ordered this from, right? The live, but the live, the person dropping it off is not a cardholder with us, right? Doesn't have, no, no credentials, meaning they took training to us to say this is a vertical ID, this is, you know, no training other than it says electronically, you guys are gonna verify who this is, and I'm assuming on a phone or some type of digital device it says.
Oh, I mean it's, you can check ID of the person and make sure that's the person that ordered it and they're twenty one or over.
Okay. Um. The retailer gets paid, so I bought the, you bought the case of water through Foodland. And then you paid a tip.
Yeah.
Oh, you didn't tip?
I did, I did.
No, you're just kidding.
I have my reasons for tipping, yeah, I did tip.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
I, I I tipped two dollars, uh two dollars and four dollars for the record.
Yeah, you tipped them for the water, right? And you add that tip on electronically or do you present it at the time?
No, that is not electronic.
At, okay.
I I thought it was advantageous to tip it upfront and then on the back end.
Okay, so I'm I'm assuming in, because it's water, nobody had to accept order, your secretary, someone in a front could could have gotten it, right?
Could have, yeah.
Did they ask for you, right?
Yes.
They did, okay.
I just came out and this guy gave me two big, um I guess, twenty four bottles of water.
Okay. The. Okay, go ahead.
Commissioner Mayasho.
Let me get this over.
Thanks, I'm I'm gonna ask you a procedural question.
Okay.
And and I'll start by stating my concern that I feel that this process, the concept, although good, innovative and keeps up with technology, lacks safeguards. And I think that goes to a lot of Vice Chair Ghanaban's questioning, and I share those concerns through the questioning. The first question I have is, your your client is not a licensee, correct?
Correct, not a license.
And your client is not seeking to apply for license?
No plan to do so, yeah.
Okay, so the procedural question I have is, um tell me how your client has standing to even make this request?
Yeah, I mean it's it's just that we're acting as an agent of the licensee. So we are, we just wanna get clarification before doing so, just because it we wanna get confirmation that our op, our operations are okay before presuming licensees would would use us.
Okay, and this is a question I had in my mind, and I I still haven't sorted it out, I hope I'm not overthinking it, but are you requesting by this declaratory ruling that if this commission were to prove it, and I'm not saying we are, would your client immediately start this concept and operations, let's say tomorrow, what's the order, what the issue?
Presumably, yes.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. In terms of the specific request, um I think there's a lot of um description of the fee structure, but as a threshold issue, I think, and tell me if I'm wrong, I think the question is, can your client provide the delivery services under this rule three dash eighty two dash thirty six point four eight? Would, is that a fair statement?
I think that's an important question, and that's why I kind of addressed it, just the the exact language of the rule.
Okay, because I don't see, as I read the rule, the plain language of the rule does not state that a third party can deliver?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't reference to a third party, you're correct.
Okay.
It does mention retail licensees and and delivery to a, to a person.
I thought I had more, but you answered my questions, thank you.
As far, as far as training, I mean that's something we could consider. Um it's not mentioned in there, but if if that would be something that would give the liquor commission more comfort um with this process, I mean it's something we could consider.
Well, I think what more or less I was thinking and concerned about it on an. on an Uber type of situation, which I'm assuming, I don't see, or I I I'm assuming, I don't see a whole bunch of the service launches and a whole bunch of service bands out there with an uh Instacart logo on it and promoting it that way, I see it somewhat like a Uber in which you put a sticker on it and you're authorized to deliver, do something and not considered to be technically employees, but a shopper, so to speak. It doesn't it the shopper is prohibited to be of age to pick up the liquor from the retailer, but the enforcement side of it, once it leaves Costco and it lands up in a shopper's hands, the liability falls back with the retailer, which makes it hard to trace back to say the retailer sold me this, I got in my car, killed somebody or whatever the situation, it's a hard argument to put it, the liability back on the retailer who is the licensee. So it's kind of a um pass the buck kinda situation, that's how I see it, where here, I mean, you you wanting to see somebody responsible and the amount of scrutiny that we go through a new license and any new licensee and continued enforcement on them to continue to make sure they follow the rules is where they're not even a licensee, you know, so.
Retail retail stores do deliver liquor, um, and if it's it's, I think it's successfully done, so we're just bootstrapping down, continuing that and planning that and acting like the a third party service to continue that.
And I think we can't, we can hold the licensee retailer who does its own delivery responsible accountable. That's the problem or struggling. And and having, you know, even notwithstanding our questions, I think there's some utilities to this model model, you can have a situation where people are still watching a football game, no one's capable of driving, shouldn't be driving, and it's a good process, concept where they can get a delivery if someone wants to consume more. Of course, not being intoxicated when they receive the delivery or the sale decline or delivery decline, but um these are our concerns, it's the 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 holes are the gaps in the capability, so.
I think ultimately the retail licensee is accountable. And when I sign with concerns.
So as I said in the beginning, there's too many unknowns, so this is my scenario and I want you to respond to this. So my youngest granddaughter graduates from Saint Francis and wife and I agreed to host a graduation party for them. So I also, because there are legally under the age but responsible consumers of adult beverages, I agree with the stipulation that they can indulge provided they do not leave my residence without my permission. Well, I order a case of uh, two cases of fourteen hands, four cases of Heineken Light, um, two cases of Budweiser Light, okay? Online, do everything, put it on my credit card, get the receipt, the driver car, the delivery person comes to my residence, I show him my license, uh my identification. The children are in the back of my house, which is our game room, our party room, outside of the view of the driver. I tell him, unload this stuff here in the garage and I'll take care of it later. He drives away. Okay. What do you see wrong with that picture?
I think that situation can happen in, not only in, it can happen in any context as far as a retail licensee. I think ultimately, once you deliver alcohol to somewhere, it's the person responsible and the person, whoever's at home, who was delivered to is responsible for that, and that's.
Don't knowing that, okay, so, but we're holding the licensee responsible. The licensee, which would be Demores, alright, the Windward City Shopping Center, has no idea of my intentions. But yet they're being held responsible. The delivery person is not licensed or registered with the commission, so we have no ability to run a uh fingerprint, criminal background uh check, uh also we have um no ability to control him. Our enforcement division has no authority to enter my property to cite anybody. So these are all concerns that the commission has because we have a responsibility to protect the safety of the general public. And we feel that there's just too many unknowns in this type of a system. So with that being said, uh commissioners, do you have any further questions or a uh type of action?
Actually, I just got a um same concern.
Commissioner Li.
Same concerns is that, you know, there's um, we do have a lot of unknowns, um because Instacart, I haven't used them before, but since they seem like they're such a large company and they have expanded nationwide, um and this is a new concept for us, um, we would like to see more information, you know, how it's how it's been done in different states, you know, what kind of um problems they've run into, um how they are working to correct the situation, um um and whatnot, it's uh yeah, because of, you know, all the responsibility it does, but back to the uh retailer and I understand you're tailoring your that with our rules and every jurisdiction has some rules as well, so yeah, I have the same concerns that I would like more information.
No, I'd appreciate the opportunity to provide more information to address your concerns, I'll be happy to do that.
Yeah.
And um I can take it back to my client and we can discuss it.
Okay, and and look, excuse me if I can. And and my last question.
Okay.
So the third party vendor that does the delivery, is he an employee of Safeway? Or Demores or any other place, or is he an independent uh vendor?
Currently as structured, he'd be an independent contractor with Instacart.
Okay, is he registered with the Department of Commerce? Is that delivery person paying state taxes? Is he getting a payroll check? These are the unknowns.
I would imagine we're we're in total compliance with the hallway state law, but I can confirm that. I can for sure confirm that.
Yeah, you know what I mean, right?
Of course.
Local jobs for local people, bro. You know what I mean?
You should see the guy who delivered.
These men and how these come in, they go catch us.
You should see the guy who delivered my water.
This is, this is Mr. Wioka, this is, I'll I'll give you the exact example, right? And because we're all adults in here, I will give you some facts. It took the city over five years to regulate Uber, right? In the time that Uber was here, there were sexual assaults against customers. So that is what this commission has concerns, you can take that back to your client and and if he can uh satisfy all concerns, then um the commission will take action on this.
I completely understand, thank you, thank you for the opportunity.
Yep, I understand. Very good, so.
I have one request, um, I I I have a lot more questions, we had a lot of questions in our minds that um we don't wanna put you on the spot not having firsthand knowledge. Would you be willing to recommend to your client to bring a representative of the company, not a lawyer, but somebody who's a stakeholder, shareholder to 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 help us answer questions with firsthand knowledge? And one example would be, for example, one example is in the fifteen or so jurisdictions that Instacart is operating, is there a specific class or category designed to allow non-licensing third parties to do these deliveries? Because we wanna see what's the experience in other jurisdictions and and that's just one example.
I understand how that would be helpful and I'll I'll see what I can do, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, uh commissioners, can we have a type of action?
Mr. Wioka, how much time would you need on this matter?
Time enough, two weeks, that'd be great.
Two weeks.
Put us into.
Yeah, it'll be uh Administrator Pahara on the dais that day, just so.
No.
No.
First eleven twenty nine.
First week of December.
I could, December sixth, I'll be on the dais.
Um, December sixth sounds great.
December. December sixth?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, all right, um, so motion to continue, agenda item nine, request number you know, coffee.
December thirteen.
Okay, so, um, is that three?
Yeah.
December thirteen, thirteen.
December, December thirteen.
Uh, Mr. Wioka, can we make it to December thirteenth?
Yes.
That's fine, that's fine, thank you.
Is that acceptable?
I'll be here too then.
Yes.
Uh?
I'll be here at thirteen, yeah.
Yeah, I wanna, yeah.
I'm not going anywhere.
You're not going anywhere.
Okay.
All right.
So motion please.
Motion to continue, agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one five five seven two, continue to December thirteenth.
Second.
Then move it second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number nine, request number one nine dash one five five seven two is uh continue to December thirteenth.
Thank you so much.
Uh, we will ask the hearings reporter to process the transfer on an expedited basis for Commissioner Min, if she's gonna be in attendance.
Okay. Calling agenda item number ten, question number one nine dash one five five seven three, commission can I have the same uh type of action as agenda item number nine?
Motion to continue, agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one five five seven three to December thirteenth.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number ten, request number one nine dash one five five seven three is continued to December thirteenth.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you, we're part on it, forget.
We're anxious to, we're anxious to see you on the thirteenth.
Hey, thank you.
Very good, uh, so let's move into agenda item number eleven, is that correct?
Yeah.
Request number one nine dash one four seven eight five from Ginmi Hawaii LLC, good afternoon, sir. Whoa.
William Robillard, R O B I L L A R D, manager for Ginmi.
Thank you very much, um, commissioner.
Motion to approve, request number one nine dash one four seven eight five.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number eleven, request number one nine dash one four seven eight five is approved. Calling agenda item number twelve, request number one nine dash one five five one two, the Key Ventures LLC. Key Ventures LLC, Mr. Sappel, please. Calling agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one five 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 nine, Kunkuya Hotel.
Yes, Chair, due to a possible conflict, I'm gonna accuse myself of this agenda item.
Thank you, Commissioner Li.
Good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Peter Kashiwa, today I am here in my capacity as a manager and officer of the sole general partner of the licensee, Kyria Hotels and Resorts. Uh, to my right is Mr. Yasu Ishikawa, he's the finance manager with Kyria Management Company.
Commissioners.
I will state for the record that um I do know the applicant, however, it will not influence my decision making in in this um specific agenda item.
Well, I will disclose for the for the record that I too uh
Yeah.
know the owner of uh the chief executive officer, it will not influence any of my decisions.
I have nothing to disclose.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, okay. So this is a requested uh requested to wave rule three dash eighty three dash sixty two of post renovation inspection for proposed internal renovations.
Okay, motion to approve, request number one nine dash one five 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 nine.
Second, move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Uh, I vote aye, um, agenda item number thirteen, request number one nine dash one five 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 nine is approved, thank you for waiting.
Thank you very much.
Okay, can I have a type of action? Uh, yes.
For the second, yeah.
Can I have the type of action for agenda items number fourteen through sixteen inclusive?
Uh, motion to approve adoption of decision and order for agenda items number fourteen to through sixteen.
Second.
Move this second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I vote uh the adoption of decision and order, agenda items number fourteen through sixteen inclusive are approved, is approved. Calling um adjudications, agenda item number, oh, not prosecutor, I'm sorry, please introduce yourself.
Good afternoon, Chair members of the Commission Deputy appropriation council, Peter Bata.
Thank you very much, uh calling agenda item number seventeen, ATG Starlight.
My name is Ms. Bapal, M I S U K G O D V O E T. Today, my lawyer and I were meeting, so can, may I possibly for next hearing, please?
Very good, commissioners, we said, uh licensee is asking for continuing, are you okay with that?
No objection.
Thank you. Motion to continue, um, agenda item number seventeen to the next available date.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number seventeen is continued to the next available date. Thank you, calling agenda item number eighteen, Cafe Melody Restaurant and Karaoke Bar.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keikiuchi for the licensee. Uh, this is gonna be a contested matter, so move it to the end of the calendar.
Calling agenda item number nineteen, the Chill Sports Bar and Grill. The Chill Sports Bar and Grill.
Oh, Mr. Keiki.
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Uh, Keikiuchi for the licensee.
Sure, due to conflict of interest, I will accuse myself from the matter.
Yeah. Thank you.
This is, this is gonna be a contested matter, would ask that be continued.
Next available date.
Next available.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so motion to continue, agenda item nineteen to the next available date.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number nineteen is continued to the next available date. You Paul?
No, I got a couple others.
No, no, but not not the chill sports.
Well, maybe we can take the other other two off.
You're right, okay, very good, uh.
Commissioner issues. Okay, twenty one is mine and twenty two is mine and twenty four is mine.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Twenty one?
Twenty one?
Twenty two.
Yeah, twenty two, okay, yeah. I just figured.
Twenty four?
Okay.
Yeah, twenty four.
Okay, so I just needed to see the names. And twenty four, okay, so let's go, uh, you have no objection, Matt, I think.
No objection.
No objection, so the first one is uh calling agenda item number twenty one.
Yeah, Keikiuchi representing the licensee. Um, licensee was not available today, so I ask them to speak continues.
Next available?
Next available, you okay?
No objection.
I'll and I'll let Mizokata know if it is to be contested, cuz I don't frankly know right now.
Mm-hmm, okay, fine.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty one to the next available date.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty one is continued to the next available date. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty two, uh Club Little Saigon.
Again, uh good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keikiuchi for the licensee. Uh, this will also be a contested matter, ask be continued to the next available date.
No objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty two to the next available date.
Second.
Then move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty two is continued to the next available date. Uh, the last one is agenda item number twenty four.
Yeah.
Hawaiian Monica Hotel.
Again. Again, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Keikiuchi for the licensee. Um, we've reading the charges, the both charges interplay and no contest.
Charge number one?
Charge number one and charge number two.
Okay, we'll take it by charge, motion to
Yeah.
Accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty four, charge one.
Second.
Move in second, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I vote uh agenda item number twenty four, no contest plea is accepted.
And as to.
Um, okay, we're gonna take charge by charge.
Yeah, we can, we can do one at a time.
This is a first offense, recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
This was a beer policy that the manager, not Roberts, that owns Huaymar, but felt that the manager did not realize was prohibited, and now he does.
So they're well aware of that?
Oh, they're, they're well aware of that.
Well.
I have made them well aware.
Thank you for that contribution. Motion to approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number twenty-four, charge one?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-four, the recommended fine, uh, charge number one, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Charge two, motion to accept?
No contest.
No contest plea for agenda item number twenty-four, charge number two?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-four, charge number two, no contest plea is accepted, Madam Prosecutor?
This, this is likewise a first offense, recommended fine is five hundred dollars.
And this was the same beer policy.
Okay, motion to accept the recommended fine of five hundred dollars, agenda item number twenty-four, charge number two?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-four, charge number two, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keiki, and we have, uh, Uh, yeah.
Twenty?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Yeah.
Thank you very much for that, well. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty, uh, Club Blue Star.
This is the chairman and members of the commission, this is, uh, Yeo Barrich, he's the owner and the manager there, Club Blue Star.
What's your name, sir?
Alan Hagio.
On or about March twenty-two, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee made physical alterations within its license premises to it, removal of a caroke room without the prior written approval of the liquor commission and violation of rule three dash eighty-three dash sixty-two subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
How would you like to plead?
Uh, I go on the down the wall.
I'm sorry, um, your options are accept or deny or no contest.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So you accept the charge?
So it's basically, uh.
Okay, one second.
One second, yeah.
Let us get the, let us the procedural down for the, uh, reporter, please.
Motion to, um, accept the plea for agenda item number twenty.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty, the, uh, licensee admits to the violation.
This is a first offense recommendation is a five hundred dollar fine.
Sir.
Well, uh, basically, it's just a small caroke room with two long burned walls acting like a partition, so, it was just a quick removal and I didn't know where to go, we didn't expand, we just stayed in, in a perimeter of, uh.
Sir, you understand that any altera- alteration to your premise needs to come through the commission?
Yeah, at that time, I didn't know, I thought it was just.
So, so you did, you did alter your floor plan, correct, by removing those walls?
Yes, yes, thank you, since, uh, you applied for, uh.
Correct, that is, that is what the rule states and that's what violation is for.
Motion to accept the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item number twenty?
Second.
This is moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty, the five hundred dollar recommended fine is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Uh, calling agenda item number twenty-three, is that correct?
Yep.
Yep.
Um, Club Splash.
Uh, Chair member, another question, I spoke with the licensee for Club Splash, um, they were requesting that we continue the hearing until December sixth, I have no objection.
Okay.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-three to December sixth.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-three is continued to December sixth. Thank you, calling agenda item.
Twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, thank you for the help. Uh, Mitsua Marketplace, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, this is chairman, good afternoon, commissioners, my name is Keith Suzuka, S U Z U K B, and to my right is the store manager of the store, his name is Mr. Katsumori Niida, spelling is K A T S U N O R I, last name N I I D A.
Thank you.
Oh, um, we'd like to, uh, we've been reading charges and we would like to enter plea of no contest.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item number twenty-five?
Second.
So moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-five, the no contest plea is accepted.
This is a first offense, recommended fine is one thousand dollars.
Uh, we just like you to know that, uh, this is a situation where the cashier, um, put in the wrong birthday, looked at it and just put in the wrong birthday, and, um, we'd like the commissioners to know that it's, uh, we take it very seriously, uh, the cashier was released and that we have taken additional steps for additional training, uh, to make sure that this type of thing hopefully will never happen again.
Thank you, Madam Prosecutor, can you give us some details, was this a compliance report?
Yes, this was a compliance check, um, the individual who purchased the alcohol was eighteen years old at the time and did have a vertical license.
Can you respond to that, please, that was a vertical ID, so?
Yes.
We'd like to know what the licensee has to say to ensure this commission that.
When, well, when, despite the training, uh, this person, the cashier, uh, looked at the license, um, instead of putting in the birthday of the buyer of the alcohol, actually put in her own birthday. Uh, we asked why that happened, and the answer was, she doesn't remember.
But this was a vertical driver's license, so automatically the bells and whistles should have went off in the marketplace. Because this person, when they applied, had got granted their driver's license, they were under the age of twenty-one. So, your, your clerk, right, should have automatically, um, the alert should have been sounded, and they shouldn't have assumed, uh, that they, that they could enter their number in, you know, vertical ID. So, how can you assure this commission that this type of mistake will not happen again? And what has the licensee done?
The, the licensee had, I'm sorry, the, the licensee had, uh, has sixteen employees there, all sixteen employees have gone to retraining at the cash register, um, they were trained again as to how to check the driver's license, and they were tr- trained, stressed upon again that you cannot put in, um, any, you have to put in the correct birth- birthday, um, and all of them have gone to this training again.
Let me ask a follow-up question, because the training just says what they're supposed to do, but how do you assure us that they're gonna not put any birthday to override the system?
Um, I.
Let me give you a softball.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, do your employees know, your client's employees know that, um, there's consequences including termination, should this happen again?
All of the employees were told of the incident, that the person has been terminated, and has been told of the severe consequences of it.
So, we've gone over this item many times with underage drinking and part of helping, um, retailers or licensees is your cashiers obviously know that they can make a quicker sale by entering the same birthday over and over again. We have seen in the past where the POS system has not allowed it, in which there's, uh, some type of edit report that basically says cashier one continues to put in a birthday of nine eleven sixty-one or what have you. Does your POS system have, or is it open to, um, more safeguards of that nature?
Yes, POS system. That you will.
Yeah, you state that. Yeah. Yeah.
Sorry, at this time, he's not aware whether it can be done or not, but we're gonna look into it.
Would advise him to check with his POS vendor to see if it can be done, and that can also, it's a preventative, um, it, it can be preventative and help him, or even if it needs a second override where every alcohol seller, manager, or someone off the rise needs to be present to verify the sale, is another safeguard as well.
Thank you.
They're also auditing the, uh, existing, um, records by the POS, it should be able to show what the cashier has inputted over a period of time. That would be great.
Thank you very much.
My motion is to, um, approve the recommended fine of one thousand dollars for agenda item number twenty-five?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-five, the recommended fine of one thousand dollars is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Calling agenda item number twenty-six, lastly, Madrid.
Um, Chair, I spoke with a representative from Pacey Meery, um, they requested that we continue the hearing until November twenty-nine, I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-six to November twenty-nine.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-six is continued to November twenty-ninth. Calling agenda item, uh, number twenty-seven, Saigon Palace Lounge.
Um, Chair and members of the commission, I spoke with Wayne Bu, who represents Saigon Palace in this matter, he is off island today and requested that this hearing be continued until November twenty-nine, I have no objection.
Motion to continue, agenda item number twenty-seven to November twenty-nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-seven is continued to, uh, November twenty-ninth. Agenda item number twenty-eight, uh, Sura, Hawaii.
Yes, Chair, due to a possible conflict, I will have to excuse myself from agenda item number twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
Thank you, Commissioner Lee.
Okay. Good afternoon, um, my name is Hyong, H Y E O N G, uh, last name Lee, L E E, um, and to my right is, uh, Kania, K A N I A, uh, her last name is Keiko, K E I K O, and currently we're both, um, the managers for Sura.
Thank you.
For charge one, on or about February first, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to help a duly registered manager in active charge of the licensed premises during the time the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point nine subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. As for charge two, on or about February first, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee, a restaurant class licensee, employed Rodley Luther as a manager or bartender in that section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered as an employee of said licensed premises with it, with the liquor permission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point five subsection B of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. For charge three, on or about February two, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee, a restaurant class licensee, employed Metchy Andon as a manager or bartender in the section of the licensed premises where liquor is sold, served, or consumed without said employee being properly registered as an employee of said licensed premises with the liquor commission in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point five subsection B of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu. Charge four, on or about February two, two thousand eighteen, in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a time card or other adequate record showing in English the month, day, year, and time indicating AM or PM and the legal first name and surname of its employee, Metchy Anderson, when that employee was on duty in violation of rule three dash eighty-two dash thirty-eight point four subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Mr. Lee, I'm gonna ask you for each charge, um, how do you want to think, so let's start with charge one, how do you want to think?
Uh, no contest.
Okay, and what about charge number two?
Uh, no contest.
What is the plea for charge number three?
Uh, all of them no contest.
Okay, and just for the record, um, what is your plea for charge number four?
No contest.
Motion to approve the no contest plea for charge number one, charge number two, charge number three, and charge number four for agenda item twenty-eight?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-eight, um, the no contest plea is accepted for charge one, two, three, and four.
Do you want me to go charge by charge?
Yes, please.
Okay, as for charge one, it's a first offense, recommended fine is five hundred dollars. As for charge two, it is also a first offense.
Excuse me? Point of order.
Thank you. We're, we're gonna take them one by one, so, um, for charge one, do you have an explanation or would you like to give a comment?
Um, the only comment that I have is we have taken, um, appropriate measures to ensure that something like that will never happen again, um, and I will go over all of them at once, which is, um, the managers, um, they all now have updated blue cards, including, um, the mentioned employee, uh, Rodley Luther, along with, um, another one which was Ma- Metchy Andon, um, and also, secondly, uh, we have uh, strictly monitored and enforced all employees, um, to make sure that they write their full name, um, on the time cards, um, but from my knowledge, before, they used to write down their nicknames, um, their short names and whatnot, but we are continuing to monitor and enforce, um, those rules, um, and also, lastly, we always make sure that there is a manager on duty with the current most up-to-date, uh, blue card on the floor monitoring all the employees.
But, thank you very much, it seems to be that you are headed in the right direction, and unfortunately, if you would have implemented all of these um, procedures earlier, then we wouldn't be here today, but thank you for taking that action and taking this very seriously.
Motion's approved, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for charge number one?
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-eight, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is, uh, approved for charge number one. Charge, go ahead, man.
Oh, I'm sorry. For charge number two, it's also a first offense, recommended fine is three hundred fifty dollars.
Mr. Lee, I know you had a long explanation, and I think I heard you say for all the matters, do you have anything else to add or comment for charge number two? Ms. Gal, did I hear you correctly, the recommended fine is three hundred dollars?
Three fifty.
Three fifty, thank you, uh, motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars for charge number two?
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote, uh, agenda item number twenty-eight, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved for charge number two.
Three hundred.
Two hundred and fifty.
Three, three.
Oh, three hundred and fifty? I couldn't, I'm sorry. I couldn't, I'm sorry. The recommended uh fine of three hundred and fifty dollars is approved.
As for charge three, it the recommended fine is also three hundred fifty dollars as is it is another first offense.
Mr. Lee, did you wanna add anything else or any other comments on charge number three? Motion to approve the recommended fine of three hundred fifty dollars for charge number three.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty eight, the recommended fine of three hundred and fifty dollars is approved for charge number three.
For charge number four, the recommended fine is two hundred fifty dollars.
First offense?
First offense.
Thank you. Mr. Lee, do you have any other comments or um anything to add for charge number four? Okay, thank you. Uh motion to approve the recommended fine of two hundred fifty dollars for charge number four.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty eight, the recommended fine of two hundred and fifty dollars is approved for charge number four.
So just for the record, um Chair and Commissioners, the total the total of the fines will be one thousand four hundred fifty dollars.
Right. Okay, calling agenda item number twenty nine, Sura Hawaii. Please uh uh go through the whole procedure again.
Okay.
Identify yourself and everything for the.
Okay, good afternoon. Uh my name is Hyung, H Y E O N G. My last name is Lee, L E E. And to my right is uh Kania, K A N I A. Last name Keiko, K E I K O. And we're both um currently the managers for Sura Hawaii.
On or about on or about, excuse me, March twenty two thousand eighteen in the city and county of Honolulu, state of Hawaii, licensee failed to have a duly registered manager in active charge of the license premises during the time the establishment is licensed to sell or serve liquor in violation of rule three dash eighty two dash thirty eight point nine subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Sir, how do you wish to plead?
Um like I mentioned before, uh
Uh just the plea.
Oh, just the plea, no contest.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the no contest plea for agenda item twenty nine.
Second.
Removed in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty nine, the no contest plea is accepted.
Recommended fine is five hundred dollars. This is a first offense.
Mr. Lee, any comment or um you wanna explain what happened here?
Um yeah, just like I said before, um we have taken measures um to ensure that something like that will never happen again. Um updated all liquor cards for company managers. Um just for the record, um the case before was um Sura number two that was located, that's located in Kapolei. And this one is for the Honolulu location. Um and yeah, we've taken care of on both sides.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that because that was gonna make my question because one month after the Ko- Kapolei location was cited, the Kapolei location was cited. What is your management structure in terms of sharing information from one location to the other?
Um to be brutally honest, um I came, I actually returned as a manager um this past June. Um and I was briefly away from the month of January to April. Um and she um she just stepped in as a manager for the Kapolei location starting from March. So we both kinda stepped in there after all these incidences took place. Um and I guess from before, there was like a lack of um uh proper management um being done by our previous managers. Um so you know, and yeah, it was just kind of a hectic situ- situation for the company at the time. Um but now since you know I returned, um I've been through the liquor commission uh rules. Um I read all the books, all the rules and stuff like that. So I know properly train the staff and to notify and to prevent um any of this from happening again. So we have taken proper measures.
Okay, thank you.
Very good, very good. Thank you very much for that representation.
Very much.
The recommended fine was five hundred dollars?
Five hundred.
Thank you. Um motion to approve the recommended fine of five hundred dollars for agenda item twenty nine.
Second.
Moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Agenda item number twenty nine, the recommended fine of five hundred dollars is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we're going back to agenda item number.
Eighteen.
Huh?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Okay, madam, uh are you prepared to proceed?
Yes.
Um get this together.
Many questions.
Mm-hmm.
Oh.
Oh, yeah. Um. If I may, yeah.
Ah, okay.
Um Chair, be free. Call the next agenda item. I am gonna recuse myself due to a conflict interest and given the time, I have another minute. I will be leaving for the day. Your pardon me. Thank you, very good. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
As to this um agenda item, Kiu Chi represent a licensee. To my right is Alyssa, A L Y S S A. Last name Yailwa, W A I L D H U A. She's the license, she's the uh soul of certain licensee. And wavering in charge inner a plea of nothing.
Um that is, I believe, as one?
Right, as the charge one and there's a separate action that's gonna be taken on charge two.
Yes. With the commissioner, with the commissioner likes to dispose of charge two previously.
So we are going to um continue with um.
We're gonna proceed with the con- contest matters to charge one.
Yes.
She's gonna dispose of charge two separately.
Okay, very good. Okay, so um you're prepar- prepared to proceed?
With charge one, yes.
Yeah, with charge number one.
Yes.
Uh how many witnesses will you be calling?
Two.
You'll be calling two, right? Okay.
And I'll have one witness.
And you will have one, Mr. Uh.
And she is outside of the.
She is outside, okay. The exclusionary rule is in effect. Okay, so um uh Mr. Gata, your opening statement?
Um just before I begin my opening statement, just because the commission is aware, um I did provide copies of exhibits to Ms. Hira before the start of this hearing. Mr. Kiu Chi also received copies.
And do you, Mr. Kiu Chi, go ahead.
Yeah, I did. And I have no objection to exhibits A, B, and C coming in for the uh stick of the prosecution.
Thank you, members of the commission. On Friday, I'm sorry, on Saturday, March twenty four, two thousand eighteen, two members of the Honolulu Liquor Commission investigation team did arrive at Kathy Melody Restaurant when upon whereupon they entered the establishment. Upon entering the establishment for a routine check of the licensee, um they ob- they observed in the back of the premises a woman later identified as an employee of Kathy Melody who was exposing herself, both her breasts and her buttocks um which were out invisible for the liquor investigators to see. Both liquor investigators are here and will testify as to their observations um on March twenty four, two thousand eighteen as to the violation of rule three dash eighty four dash seventy eight point zero two subsection A of the liquor the rules of the liquor commission of the city and county of Honolulu.
Very good. Uh what the evidence will show is that the woman in question, Taylor Alberich, A L B E R V C H T, was not employed on the evening in question. She had not worked at the establishment for two months before that. She was there at the establishment with a friend of hers in a karaoke room. The evidence also showed that she was not unclothed, she had underwear, and she was not nude at the time. So who asked the commission at the end to find the licensee not guilty? Okay. Just.
First witness will be Scott Perez.
I swear you in.
I'm sorry.
You swear as if the testimony you give today is here with the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Yes.
Please state your name for the record.
I'm acting supervising investigator Scott Perez for Enforcement Section.
And was that your employment on March twenty three and twenty four, two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
And you were employed and on duty on those days?
Yes.
Okay. On March twenty four, two thousand eighteen, did you have occasion to go to Kathy Melody Restaurant and Karaoke Bar?
Yes.
Why did you go there?
I went there to conduct regular inspection of the establishment.
And about what time did you arrive at Kathy Melody? Would anything help to, if you don't remember, would anything help to refresh your recollection?
Yes, definitely.
Your copy of your report showing Mr. Perez's copy of report marked as exhibit A.
So our approximate time that we arrived was about zero zero thirty six hours.
And when you say we who did, who else, did you arrive with?
Myself and investigator Tupul, Arthur Tupul.
Okay. And when you got to Kathy Melody, did you enter the license premises?
Yes.
And what did you observe when you entered Kathy Melody?
So as soon as we entered, I could, I seen patrons throughout the bar, some s- um employees working. And as I walked into the establishment more, there is a karaoke room off to my right. So I looked in part of my inspections to just to see if there's any anything going on that's of some concern or any concern. When I looked in, I saw an unidentified female and an unidentified male sitting close together with their backs to the door.
Yeah, upon seeing that, did you enter the karaoke room?
I observed for um a short period of time prior to my entry.
Okay. And what, if anything, did you observe upon your entry to the room?
So when I did enter the room, the male and the female were seated right next to each other. As I stepped over, the male was making a sweeping motion, like he was hunched over and he made a sweeping motion from like right to left. His hands were to his face. When he's, when I walked in and he sat up, I could see a rolled up dollar bill and there's a white pottery substance on the table.
Okay. What was the female doing?
She was seated next to him.
Just sitting?
Yes.
Okay. What was the lighting condition like in the karaoke room?
It was well lit.
Okay. And other than that, male and female, were anybody else in the room?
So prior to me entering, there is another female who went in. She spoke with the female that was seated. As soon as the they had their conversation, the one that just entered left. The female seated looked at me and they, her and the male kinda scooted a little bit further with like maybe a couple inches from each other.
So they scooted to the sides away from each other? Okay.
Of course. Yeah.
Did you later identify the individuals who were in the karaoke room when you entered?
Yes, I asked for identification at that time. They both produced driver's license. Actually, sorry, my the male produced the driver's license, the female stated she did not have any identification on her. Her identity was later verified by HPD.
Okay. Um how did you, HPD came, how did they determine her identity?
So HPD made their verification through dispatch.
Okay. Um did you later determine the identity of the female?
Yes.
Okay, what was her name?
Her name was, I mean, it's.
Sure. Showing Mr. Perez's copy of his report marked as exhibit A.
Taylor Albrecht.
Okay. And do you know if she was employed by Kathy Melody on March twenty four, two thousand eighteen?
At the time of the incident, no. And when I asked her if she was, she stated she was a customer.
Okay. Did you later determine that she was in fact employed by Kathy Melody?
Yes, upon return to the office, I verified through LCIS, our database, that um Miss Taylor Albrecht was actually a registered employee.
Okay, and she was registered on her registration was still good, I suppose, on March twenty four, two thousand eighteen?
Yes, she's had a current card at the time of the violation.
Okay. When you saw Miss Albrecht, what was she wearing?
I saw her wearing a white dress. The dress, there was no shoulder straps and her dress was actually pulled down and up. So everything was just covering her midsection.
Did you observe any, did you observe her breasts?
At that time, no. She had her arms covering her chest and her lower half.
Can you demon- can you stand up and demonstrate to the commission what you mean?
Yes. So her arms were across her chest and her hand was blocking her bottom.
Did you see any other part of her body exposed?
So she was sitting her back to us. When we did separate the two, the male and the female, she's kinda didn't really stand up, but when she did, I could see her buttocks.
You could see that when you were standing outside of the karaoke room?
From inside the door.
Okay. What was the lighting conditions like in the karaoke room?
It was well lit.
And did you speak with Miss Albrecht?
Pretty good.
Um did you advise her to do anything or ask her any questions?
So investigator Tupul brought it to my attention that she could possibly be more unclothed than we actually presumed. So we told her, we asked her, are you naked? And she replied, yes. At that point, I instructed her to cover herself appropriately.
Okay. Did you issue a citation to Kathy Melody on that day for with respect to the nudity?
Yes.
Um I'm gonna show you what's marked as exhibit B, the bottom right-hand corner. Is that a fair and accurate copy of the citation that was issued to Kathy Melody?
Yes.
Okay. And did you, and when you issued the citation, did you explain what the citation was for?
Yes.
Okay. Um also, or what rule violation, what rule was violated that is that led to the citation being issued?
The restrictions on nudity.
Okay. And I know you had a copy to look, an opportunity to look at exhibit A. Is that a true and accurate copy of your report?
Yes.
I have no further questions.
Okay. Commissioners, do you have any questions of this witness?
I do.
Commissioner Gamba.
Um so Mr. Perez, when you approached the room, when you approached the karaoke room, was there anything obstructing the door or anything, or it was a, you were freely allowed to enter the room?
There is no obstructions to the room. I was free to enter.
The seating arrangement, you said if their backs were faced towards the entrance.
Yes, the booths within the room, they were not fixed, so any person could adjust it and range it to however they felt. Um the boot that they were sitting on was actually two booths pushed together. And when me and investigator Tupul entered, we separated the male and the female and we actually had to move the booths apart so that we were able to walk through unobstructed.
The boots height is about how high?
It's about, if I was to sit back up to my shoulder, so I could see the shoulder.
So looking above the booth and down, you could observe what the activity was for the female and the male?
I couldn't see clearly their, since they're sitting um that close to each other, I couldn't see exactly what they were doing. But I'm yeah, I could kind of
Okay.
I guess what was going on.
Um it's been presented here that she was a customer at the time.
Yes, at the time, when I asked.
Did you, did you notice any microphones or karaoke songs playing on top of the, on the screen?
So there was a karaoke machine, but there, that time no songs were being played.
My last question. It's, did you observe her with a purse or a bag within the room? Did she have personal belongings in that room?
Yes.
She had a purse?
Yes, a small.
Mr. Kiu Chi?
Uh investigator Perez, when you got into the room, you described very carefully the male with a rolled up dollar bill, right?
Yes.
Be fair to say that your attention was focused on him?
My attention was focused on both individuals within the room for my safety and theirs.
Okay. And did you see whether Ms. Albrecht had any underwear?
Her underwear was on the floor.
Okay, and you clearly noticed that?
Yes.
Okay. Why is it you didn't ask the uh manager on duty that night for a time card for Ms. Albrecht?
At the time of that incident, I asked Ms. Albrecht if she was an employee and she stated she was not and she was a customer.
Right.
So there, at that point, there is really no need for me to ask if there. So there at that point, there is really no need for me to ask if there's a customer has a time card.
Okay, but then when did you find out she was registered with the commission?
When I left the office and I came or when I left the establishment and came back to the office to type up my report.
That was that same night?
Yes.
But your report is written April fourth and the incident occurred March twenty four.
Yes.
Well, explain the difference, if you typed up the report that that night?
So when I did, the next night that I I went out, this is not on my report. Next night I did a follow up to verify Ms. Albrecht's ti- um employment or her time card.
Yeah.
I did ask the manager on duty at that time for all the time cards and her time card was not there.
Okay. So her time card wasn't there, wouldn't that indicate she wasn't working?
Like I stated prior, she said she was a customer.
But the only evidence you had that she was not a customer or that she was employee was her registration card with the commission, is that right?
Correct.
But you never went back to you never found a time card for her at all in the establishment, right?
No sir, Ms. Albrecht was not acting as an employee at the time of my inspection.
Okay, thank you, I have nothing further.
I have no further.
You have no further, you have, okay. Uh we can excuse Mr. Perez.
Yes. We send in the second.
Yes, you have another witness to call?
Yes, Arthur Tupola.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
I should. Yeah.
I'm gonna swear you in. Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I please state your name for the record?
Arthur Tupola Liquor Control Investigator.
And were you so employed and on duty on March twenty three and twenty four two thousand eighteen?
Yes.
Okay. On March twenty four two thousand eighteen, did you go with um Scott Perez to Cafe Melody Restaurant and Karaoke Bar?
Yes, I did.
And why did you go there?
Uh to conduct the inspection.
Okay. About what time did you arrive at Cafe Melody?
I believe it was zero zero thirty six hours.
Okay. And when you arrived at Cafe Melody, did you have occasion to enter the establishment?
Yes.
And what did you observe when you entered the establishment?
When I walked in, I uh proceeded inside, I observed uh Scott Perez proceed to a karaoke room to the uh south corner portion of the establishment.
Did you follow him?
Uh no, I don't, we we broke off um during our inspection, I observed him enter the Karaoke Room and I proceeded shortly after.
Okay, so eventually you did enter the Karaoke Room?
Yes, I did.
Okay. When you entered the Karaoke Room, what if anything did you see?
Um I observed the male and female individual seated adjacent to each other with a table uh in front of them. I also observed a one dollar USD uh bill with a white pottery substance.
What if anything was the female wearing?
Um when I observed her, she was nude from the waist down.
Waste down?
Yes.
Okay. Meaning that you saw that she did not have any underwear on as well?
Correct, showed her genital areas were exposed.
Okay. When you observed that, did you speak with when you observed what was going on with the Karaoke Room, did you speak with either the male or the female in the room?
No, I didn't, my objective was to secure the the area where the white powder substance was located.
Okay. Did you later come to I know the identity of the female in the room?
She, I believe Esperes asked for her identity, she didn't have anything uh no form of identification on her uh her identification was not uh obtained verbally.
Okay. Did you did you perform an LCIS check or was that only um Scott Perez?
Um both of us did.
Okay, and did you later come to find out she was employed by Cafe Melody?
Yes, she was later on when we returned to the office when conducted a check through LCI, she was registered for the establishment.
Okay. Um I'm gonna show you what's been marked as exhibit C. Have you just look it over very briefly and just let us know if this is a true and accurate copy of the report that you generated for this incident.
Oh shit, bad accident.
Thank you, I have no further questions, Francis Tupola.
Commissioners, do you have any questions? Okay. Mr. Kyuchi.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Uh, prosecutor Tupola, the violation seem to be uh been issued on March twenty fourth, is that correct?
I can show you what's been marked as exhibit A.
Yeah.
That is correct.
You remember what time they were issued on March twenty fourth? Let me ask you an easier question, were they issued at the scene?
Yes, they were.
Okay, so when you were at the scene and saw Miss Albrecht um did you ask for a time card?
Excuse me for.
Did you ask if she was an employee?
Um I believe Esperes did, I did.
And you re- recall what her answer was?
Um I don't recall.
Okay, did you tr- ask for a time card?
No, I didn't.
But you issued a violation for her as an employee, correct?
Well, I didn't issue the it was Esperes, I issued the citation.
But you can you also agreed with the issue to the citation?
Um yes, I did.
If you agreed with the issue to the citation, then she would have been an employee, right?
Um
Cause there's no violation if she was a customer, right?
Well, the I think the violation was her being uh for nudity, restrictions on nudity.
But that's for her being an employee under restriction. Right?
Um
Or do you know?
No, it's it's nudity, at at the time we didn't know if she was an employee or not.
So let's talk about the nudity, when you saw her, her top was covered?
Yes, I believe so.
So it's only her dress was up, is that right? And she had no underwear?
Yeah, correct, her genitals were exposed.
Where was her underwear?
Um I don't recall.
Do you recall if she had anything with her, like a purse or a handbag?
Not to my knowledge.
Is there a reason why you didn't verify at the scene whether she was an employee?
Um I believe Esperes uh was trying to find out if she was an employee or not, like I stated, my primary objective was to secure the the evidence.
Well, because you were focused on the male in the room with the dollar bill, right? And the pottery substance.
Correct.
Okay, I have nothing further.
No further questions.
Okay, so then this witness is um excuse, right, and Mr. Kyuchi.
Uh I'll call Taylor Albrecht.
Chair. Chair. Can can we enter the proceedings of evidence?
Pardon?
Can we accept the proceedings of evidence for the issues?
Uh.
Yes, thanks.
Uh yes.
For the record.
Yes, so do we need a motion for that?
We don't have to have a motion, but I just need to put on the record that the commission has accepted.
Okay. Okay, very good, so you have anything further?
Um I have nothing further, so I'm gonna move that to this commission except exhibits A, B, and C as part of the record.
Yeah, I have no objection.
Very good, so move, thank you.
Yeah, it's very sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Second.
Go to check and download your paper, I will.
Hi. Okay, and call Taylor Albrecht.
Do you swear that the testimony you give today's hearing will be the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Please state your name.
Taylor Albrecht A L B R E C H T.
Okay. And on the early morning hours of March twenty four two thousand eighteen, where were you?
Um I was at Cafe Melody celebrating a birthday.
And And who are you celebrating the birthday with?
Um I was celebrating the birthday with Michael and there was a lot of other people there for the birthday.
Okay. And Michael is a friend of yours?
Yes.
And what were you wearing that evening?
I was wearing a white dress.
Okay, you you went back just before this hearing today and you looked in your phone and you found a picture of you that evening, is that right?
Yeah.
Could you show me that?
I took a screenshot of the date.
Okay, and the scr- the dates on the screenshot, is that right?
Yes.
And is that how you appeared on the evening of March twenty fourth?
Yes.
I should. Okay, then show the.
Mr. Kyuchi, mov- moving forward, I would appreciate if you have those downloaded and put them into evidence.
I I I I apologize, Chair, I I did not know until she.
Yeah. We have no way of knowing if
I I understand.
any if that had been altered in any way.
No, I understand that.
Yeah.
I I there's no way of knowing that is
Mo- moving forward, please.
Yeah, kidding.
Thank you.
Um Ms. Albrecht, so that evening, were you working at Cafe Melody?
No, I was not.
And prior to March twenty four two thousand eighteen, what's the last day you worked at Cafe Melody?
Um I only worked for a couple of weeks until I got a new job.
And what was the new job?
I work at DB Grill. It's in Kapolei, cause I live in other beach, so it's a far drive.
Okay. And you were registered with the commission at Ca- Cafe Melody in March?
Yes. Mm-hmm.
Never changed that registration, right?
No, because I'm not a bartender at my current job.
So you got a different type of card that you current job at DB Grill?
No, I just waitress and I only waitress usually in the morning.
And that's a restaurant license, right?
Yes.
So you don't have to get a yellow card, right? And you weren't you were never a bartender over at DB Grill, correct?
No.
And the type of card you had for Cafe Melody was as a bartender, correct?
It was a yellow card.
Okay. Now, that evening, when you remember when the two investigators from the Liquor Commission were there?
Mm-hmm.
And where were you at the time?
I was in the Karaoke Room.
And when they entered uh the Karo- Karaoke Room, who is there in there with you?
Uh Michael.
And just you and Michael?
Yes.
Okay. And when they entered, what did you have on? What kind of clothes did you have?
I had on my white trousers.
And was any of it removed up down, no?
No. Okay.
Did you have underwear on that, do you think?
Yes, I had underwear on.
And your the screenshot you took indicates you had a strapless bra, right?
Yes.
Okay.
So when they came in, were you still had the white dress on, right?
Yes.
Still had the underwear on, right?
Yes.
And none of that changed?
No.
During the time they were there, right?
No.
And did you have anything with you, like a purse or a handbag?
Yes, I had um similar to this, like a little small handbag, like a clutch.
Okay. And uh were you able to provide any ID to the investigators?
Uh no, I did not have my ID on me, I had a bigger bag, but one of my friends that I also came with had it and I didn't know where she was.
Okay.
But I did have a picture of my ID which everything checked out with.
Did the investigators ask you if you were an employee?
Yes.
And what did you say?
I said no.
And you said you were a customer, right?
Yes.
Did the investigators ask you if you were nude?
No.
Never asked you that, right?
They never asked me that.
Okay. I have nothing further. Don't they get to ask you questions?
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Gamba.
Oh, I'm sorry, does the commission have any questions before I ask any questions?
Or is?
We we would ask now or you ask first?
You just. Oh, okay, do do you wanna have a question, commission?
Yeah. No, I'm I'm assuming she's gonna ask and then we can ask after, right? Okay, no?
Well, let me make a point about it, okay, so commissioners, do you have any questions of the witness?
How is this? Yes, I agree.
Okay.
Um so birthday party?
Yes.
Birthday party was there?
Yes.
Where were the rest of your friends?
The rest of my friends were out in the not in the karaoke room.
And they were.
They were out over by the cake and probably the food, there is a bunch of food and cake and everything there.
Was it a private party?
Um no, it was open to everybody. Anybody that came to the bar or anything like that.
Did you sing karaoke that night?
Yes.
In that room?
Yes.
So there seem seems to be obviously conflicting stories, um invest- our investigators claimed that your underwear was on the ground.
They were not.
You're stating it was not?
No.
At no time were you unclothed?
No.
Or anything?
No.
So what type of that conversation going on, you and Michael good friends, what's happening?
Um yeah, we were talking about some stuff for his like he's a lawyer too, so we were talking about stuff like that. We also talked about um so I I'm not from here. So I don't really know like a lot of people and stuff, so we talked about Washington and he's just one of the few people that I've met while in here.
So the other group of your friends um that had your ID?
Yes.
They left the party and you don't know where they went?
Um I yeah, I'm I wasn't sure.
Did you were you able to regain your ID later that night?
Yes.
And you met up at where?
Um I don't recall.
Did you drink that night?
Yes, I did.
How clear is your recollection of that night?
My recollection is very clear from that time because obviously it was nerve wracking to have policemen and people like that. But I did continue to drink after that.
There at the establishment?
No, not at the establishment.
Left?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just have one question, you just stated that you were upset because there were policemen and other things there, could you repeat that?
No. No, I was not upset, I'm saying that my recollection of that is very clear because obviously
You were.
when there's like people in there and they're like I don't know.
Other people?
Yeah, like other people, like Liquor Commission and stuff like that, like that makes you.
Okay, I'm I'm. Believe I misunderstood, then I thought you said policeman.
Just like Liquor Commission and stuff.
So you knew the uh enforcement division was present or are you talking about a uniform? I'm I'm a little bit confused and I want you to clarify for that for to me.
When when the Liquor Commission came into the room when they were talking with us.
They identified themselves, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Right, very good.
I have one more recurring question, the picture that you showed us, um was that taken at the restaurant?
Yeah.
Or at the Karaoke Bar?
Yes, that was in the rooms, yes.
With the white boots? Those booths are faced against the wall and according to the picture that you showed us.
Mm-hmm. There's multiple count, there's like multiple booths in the rooms.
The when you enter the room, is there any booths obstructing the entrance to get in?
Um there was
That night, specifically that night?
One booth this way and then one facing the door, one with the back to the door and then there's one facing the door.
So we have two booths like this, one is facing towards the entrance doorway and.
Yes. Yes, and there's still a walkway to get inside of the booth.
The walkway would be to the side to get in?
And. Yeah, so the walkway would be to the left, you'd walk through and then you could either sit facing the door or you could sit with your back to towards the door.
So were there two bo- bo- booths adjoining like this?
No.
So you're it's just one booth, then you have to enter to go around to the front to get into the booth space?
Um wait, I don't understand, sorry.
When you enter into the room
Okay.
there is not a clear pathway to walk into the room?
No, there's a clear pathway, it's just off to the side, so like the TV and stuff is right here for the karaoke the karaoke machine and you can walk in between that and the booth. So there's still like a clear space. It would probably be a little bit bigger than the space in between here.
So let me ask you this, so you guys went there with intentions to sing karaoke?
Oh, we went there with intentions to celebrate the party with everybody and then we also went in and sang karaoke.
Did you pay for that night?
Did I pay for that?
Did you pay for did you pay for the music that you requested or the songs that you sang?
Oh. Yeah.
Did you present that to Mr. Kyuchi as form of evidence that you're a customer?
Well, they actually. Well, they actually, it's dollar bills inside of the
So you feed the machines inside of it?
Like inside of a machine, yeah, exactly.
Okay, you recall what you sang?
Um I always sing love by Alicia, wait, who's that by? I think it's by Alicia Keys, I'm not very good with um like the names, I like to sing Varun Five, um Sunday Morning.
That's what you sang that night, yes, okay.
It's one of my favorites.
More further questions?
Yes.
Okay. Zugata.
Okay, how long were you at Cafe Melody?
Um I got there probably like ten thirty, ten-ish.
Between ten and ten thirty sometime there?
Yeah.
Okay. And where prior to being Cafe Melody, had you been at another bar, restaurant, anything like that?
No.
So you came from home?
Yes.
Okay. And when you got to Cafe Melody, um did you have any alcohol?
When I got there, like from the establishment, did I have alcohol?
Uh from at that ten between the ten and ten thirty and when the liquor commission came, were you drinking alcohol?
Um I had a few drinks, yeah.
What were you drinking?
Uh I always drink a Washington apple.
And I don't, I remember Mister Kyuchi asking you this question, but I don't recall an answer, so forgive me if you did answer. When were you employed at Cafe Melody?
Um I don't remember the exact dates, but I know it was like a couple months after I moved here. That was the first place that I got a job at and I really only worked there for a couple weeks, I wanna say it was like in the brewery or it could have been like a little bit later, I'm not sure.
And you said did you had a yellow card or just the bartender card?
Yeah. I just know it's whenever I got my bartender's card, I started that week, cause I they didn't allow me to work without the card.
Um when you were in the karaoke room, did you move, you or Michael or any of the other people you were with, move any of the I guess the chairs or the booths? Are they movable, to your knowledge?
I possibly, yeah, probably.
Okay, I have no further questions.
I have nothing.
Okay. So then now, Siri, closing out then? Right?
Um is Miss Albrecht?
He he has nothing.
Oh no, no, is Miss Albrecht gonna be like?
She's yeah, you can go, actually you can go, thank you.
Thank you.
Mister Kyuchi, for the record, you rest.
Yeah, I rest, yes.
Yes. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes.
In this matter, Cafe Melody was cited with violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero two subsection A which specifically states, no licensee shall permit any person other than registered dancers during their performances to be unclothed or in such attire, costume, or clothing as to expose it to view any portion of their pubic hair, anus, cleft of the buttocks, genitalia, or any portion of the female breast below the top of the areola in the licensed premises. In this case, albeit there was conflicting testimony, we did have two liquor commission investigators that did observe Miss Albrecht or a person later to be identified as Miss Albrecht, wearing a white dress at approximately twelve after midnight on March twenty fourth two thousand eighteen. Mister Perez did state that he observed her top that top of her dress was pulled down and that the bottom of her dress was pulled up, um although that she was although he did testify that she was covering, that he did observe her underwear on the floor. Mrs. Tupola testified that he observed Miss Albrecht's top covered, but that he did observe her genitals as exposed, on that she was nude from the waist down while they were in the karaoke room. Miss Albrecht testified although that she did, she said that she was a customer there that night, but she cannot recall when she worked there, maybe in February, maybe sometime later, but at any rate, even when she was when she was employed at Cafe Melody, she did just have a bartender card, she was not registered as a dancer and was not performing as a dancer on that night. Um Miss Albrecht testified that she probably had a few drinks between arriving at the bar between ten and ten thirty and approximately twelve thirty six AM on the twenty fourth when Mister when investigator Perez and Tupola did arrive. She, there was some concurring testimony that she was alone in a karaoke room with a man who she identified as Michael that she didn't have her ID and that she was there that evening to celebrate a birthday. We're gonna, I'm gonna ask if this commission finds that Cafe Melody was guilty of violation of rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero two subsection A of the liquor commission rules.
Thank you, Mister Kyuchi.
The uh charge is licensee's employee who is not employed as an exotic dancer exposed herself. And what's very clear is that she was not an employee at the time nor did apparently either of the investigators ask for time card at the time. And she said that she was not an employee, she was a customer. And only later was did was it determined that she's registered with the commission, but the curious part is that they issued the citation for that very charge, assuming she was an employee. But nevertheless, the uh testimony of the two investigators conflict, one says that she had her top and her her top down and her dress up, the other investigator said she did not have her top down, but she had her dress up. So there's some conflicting testimony by the two investigators that testified. Um Miss Albrecht said that she had all of her clothes on uh that she did not have the underwear on the floor as investigator Perez testified to and investigator Tupola could not remember any underwear on the floor. As an indication that she was not an employee, but she was a customer, she had a was she testified to a clutch bag at the time, which would not be apparent if she was an employee. So based on the foregone on as the commission find licensee not guilty.
Thank you, Mr. Gata, closing, your closing argument?
Oh. No rebuttal?
Fine, fine, yeah.
Oh.
You get a rebuttal.
Oh, I'm I'll rest on my closing argument, thank you.
Rest, okay, okay, uh we will uh recess to
Motion to deliver.
To deliver it.
Second.
We we don't need a motion, do we? No. Yeah.
Oh, we don't need that?
Yeah, we just want recess to go on, yes. Okay, we are back on the official um record, um commissioners, do you have a um decision in this deliberation?
Yes, Chair. Um prior to us um making this decision um I wanna state this for the record and make this comment. And I'm gonna state this specifically to you, um Alyssa Hualeku, you are the agent and you are you are the licensee.
Um yes, I am.
Okay, yeah, yes, you are.
Mm-hmm.
Um let me remind you and let me tell Mister Kyuchi the efficacy and what's required at being at this commission. I understand that the circumstances and the details here may bore you and you may not be entertained by what's happening up here, but your conduct here half sleeping, not aware of what's going on affects your bar and affects your license. I would appreciate, hopefully you will never be in front of this commission again that the next time you come to this commission, be prepared, be attentive, and be aware of what's going on.
Okay.
This affects your bar. Okay? Having said that the commission finds the prosecution has not met the burden of proof for charge number one. Therefore, the commission finds no violation specifically to rule three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight dot um dash zero one subsection A as well as no violation to the rule of three dash eighty-four dash seventy-eight point zero two subsection A of the rules of the liquor commission.
Second.
Then moved in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion is approved.
We need to dispense with charge two.
Yes.
Okay, so let let me uh call agenda item number eighteen, Cafe Melody Restaurant, charge number two.
As for charge number two, um the prosecution is going to be moving to dismiss this charge and feel that we do not have adequate evidence to go forward with this particular charge.
Mission to gun about.
Did you need more time?
No, um in this, the the charges for illicit drugs, however, after doing some further digging, it turns out that um only the police department did not collect a sample nor do any tests on any of the substance that may or may not have been illicit within the bar, so as such, um prosecution feels that we do not have adequate evidence to go forward with that charge.
Okay. Motion to dismiss charge number two, agenda item number eighteen.
Second.
Move to second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I vote aye, agenda item number eighteen, charge number two is dismissed.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Before you move, Mister Kyuchi, police counsel, your client.
I will, I will.
I was prepared to ask you if she you needed medical assistance or something.
I'll I'll talk, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so we have one agenda item left and that would be agenda item number do we have any uh admin papers, a mess, I believe it is agenda item number?
Thirty.
Thirty, that's a great number, do we have any administrative matters?
Yeah.